Well, maybe.
Well, maybe.
I'm assuming so too, because the email will let me sell.
Yeah.
He told me to get a little lot of supply.
That is true.
Yeah. Yeah. But is it different? Okay, we ready to go? Any, any second?
Nope, I'm set.
Okay, good. Uh, in that case, it is six oh two, following the city council meeting on July fifth, twenty twenty three, door. We'll call please.
Councilmember Larson, here. Mayor Lobbie.
Here.
Uh, councilmember Linnellah.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Green, here. Councilmember Thomas, here. Our councilmember Grant is absent, and councilmember Helen is.
Thank you. This time I would ask for approval of the agenda. And then we'd like to change on this agenda. See now, uh, we're gonna take motion please. And then let us to approve the agenda.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All in favor of that. Uh, housekeeping matters, and then if anyone wants to touch on them before we get started.
Yeah.
Please, Tracy.
Um, yeah. So ongoing saga of East Seventh Street where they turned down all the pavement. And it's not gonna be paved until the end of the month. There's dust flying everywhere. Can we get some water trucks out there?
I talked to Parkville, you know, it is their project, but we, we did upgrade it for them, because we're gonna do paving up. Because we'll curb the curb, but I will give them probably more. I heard that it was gonna be paved next week, did that change?
We have, that's what I said.
No.
It was supposed to be the end of June, and it got moved to the week after July fourth. It should be next week. Still the plan as of last week.
Okay.
I still get Parkville, I'll ask them to. And then they asked us for help, whatever, you know, I don't want to step in, which I was using. Alright, thank you. And just so you know, we agreed with Parkville to, uh, to pave curb, curb around and just pave the section as they tore off. So that we have an entirely paved street. And gun, sometimes if they're going, that will give street at the price, you know, and so. Hopefully we turn that one up. Uh, at this time, we, uh, would like to hear from the public, any public comments? Uh, on items not on the agenda. Okay, uh, we'll see what goes in the chat. Chris, Chris, okay. The clock is moving the, uh, we do eleven there. Alright, may I see your session? But you do play the meetings for. The pledge meeting is five. And now the state of Maryland. Two, three, four, the rich and the貧, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great and just strong. Um, apparently, the, the other guy called was added in nineteen fifty four. Um, the pledge of meetings. Well. Hopefully, I from, uh, our Secretary of State, Mr. Austin. Had about to need a regret and a deep and rewarding march at the most prosperity of the conflict. Uh, just in relation to China. That's some kind of same voice saying. Um, I just recently found out that the realtors are making thirty five thousand dollars on each unit that they say selling in the rail yard. Um, I'd like hopefully somebody to, uh, uh, verify that in city council, as well as, uh, get city council moving to put the budget, believe it's back on, on the, uh, agenda. Um, and so they're making thirty five K per sale, replaced their selling for now eight hundred thousand dollars. And they're renting, I think, for fifty four hundred dollars a month. If that's correct, it seems unreasonable, unbelievable, but that's why I'm bringing this. Now, this was a, uh, project that this administration, uh, championed by taking C dot funds of at least four hundred thousand dollars and donating it to this project. Um. And this project was done by a professional, I mean, the, the, the. It's, uh, there was one that just went, yes. Um, a professional realtor that know, knew that this would accelerate the gentrification town here. So now a lot of people are more raised here, their taxes are doubled. And they're not getting any benefit at the best. Um, it's become burdensome to some people live here. Uh. So this whole hot approach with, um, realtors and government and profiteering on a vulnerable community. Um, it has to be examined somehow in a pragmatic manner. And it's not just like anything goes, yeah, you know. So this is really, this, this was, the project was unnecessary. It doesn't create a benefit for the, uh, whole of Lake County itself, other than to, uh, accelerate the development. We have one person on city council, I don't agree that she should be there, since she was the person who likes to move things forward. Mr. President, I should turn this up at this time. I thought it just needs two minutes up.
I mean, it's.
I'm three, okay, sorry. Please go up and introduce yourself. You sort of dress, and you have three minutes.
We'll take care of them. My name is Chris Gary, I'm the president of the Whiteville Running Men Club. I simply here to ask for correction in minutes, so I, I hope I'm not out of, um, I hope I'm not out of order here, to, to simply say that the, we, the Whiteville Running Men Club has secured the lease of the gym. The annual gun show that happens in concert with, with boot days is going forward as scheduled, and I would just like the minutes to reflect that it is not being canceled.
Um, I, I don't know if it's actually said that, some of this came up the other day, and I told them, no, what we talked about in the city council, with the gun talks.
Correct.
Are not gonna be held, but we didn't know about the gun talk.
I understand. And, and I, the, we gotta, it's so important to us to draft five minutes, and I'm just standing here to say, if you please correct the minutes, that's all.
We'll be happy.
And as well, if you guys ever need to contact us, I'd like to, to the mayor or anybody else that uses the card, the website, um, our phone numbers from the website. We're more than happy to, uh, you know, we give a lot of things to the, you know, you can say, you know, each every holiday, and you do those things. So we're more than happy to answer any questions that any member, any council member, or government member, or any member of the public that.
Great, thank you, Chris.
That's all, and we do this, right?
If I could have.
Thanks for that.
Do that.
Back to the team, please, so I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not gonna personally, I don't want to wear my hats out there.
Right, you want us to let their hands out?
Yeah.
Well, yes. Oh.
Yeah, yeah. You're also not so much.
Just with her.
Okay. Uh, okay, thank you very much. Anybody else in the public who would like to speak to city council on items on the agenda? Anybody else who, uh, who'd like to speak to city council on items on the agenda? Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh, this time we have a consent agenda, these are meant from June sixth and June twentieth of twenty twenty three. So anything we would like to have changed on the minutes? Would, would that, is that part of these, one of these minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
I, yeah, I wrote gun show. I didn't know the difference, I guess, between the gun fight and the gun show.
I, I get it, okay, we'll take care of that. Thank you, thank you very much.
We should be split up since when was that question?
Um, it's always a problem, if you consent agenda, but, yes, well, we should, let me do June sixth first.
Okay. Um, it's not having West and bathing West. On the sixth? Yeah.
So the correction to fame west. First being, you know, moved to, we shouldn't have consent agenda, you have to move to get out of every time you do this. Okay, I, I would change motion.
Right, let's remove the eight minutes from the consent agenda.
Move near land seconds. Any other discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now we're the June sixth. Uh, minutes, is there anything else needs to be changed? We have a correction for fading white blood. Hearing nothing, I'm gonna take a motion on the June sixth. We're, take a couple of minutes. Then let's to approve the modified June sixth meeting minutes.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all in favor. Now we have the June twentieth, twenty twenty three. Now your motion would lead me to believe the June twentieth are still on the consent agenda, is that correct? Yeah, okay. Then, and then who's to remove the June twentieth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes from the consent agenda?
Good thoughts.
This is working out very well. Any other discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Thank you, all in favor. At this time, we are now considering the June twentieth minutes. Is this the one that had the, the, uh, issue with the, the confusion between the gun fights and gun show? Okay, so in that correction will be made. Is there anything else?
I guess we should have, uh, at the very least, I, uh, expressed some concern of having the gun show, as that's where it came from as well. Um, in the first place, um, and expressed interest in potentially speaking about, um, or liking to see, uh, the county not have that this year around, but I don't know how important that is for it to be in the minute.
I think you did express that, so I don't know if it's in the minutes or not, well, I mean, you, you talked about that on, on the twentieth.
Yes.
If it's in the minutes or good, it's not, you can actually have those comments there.
Um, I just don't see them on there, but I also, I'm looking through these.
Okay, if you would like to request that.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a request that that is added as a clarification alongside, uh, the gun fight being canceled. And the gun show, uh, on six three J, uh, leave at the radius, comes murder Lunnella at three six.
Okay.
Any other changes to the June twentieth? Minutes. Hearing none, I'm gonna entertain emotions.
And then moves to approve the modified June twentieth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Almost will say.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. At this time, we have a city events bureau report. Laura, I hope you're doing okay, um.
Yep. Uh, I apologize for not being there in, in person, but I just have a brief report this evening. I wanted to let everyone know that our E nine one one board has been established. The last entity we were waiting for a signature on was Saint Vincent's, and they signed off on the document that, uh, was presented to you all, so we now have an E nine one one, uh, entity established, and the board, the county commission appointed Sheriff Speckman, um, Fire Chief Dan Daly, uh, interim chief Ken Chavez, OEM Director Claire Skeen, and ambulance service director, uh, Grantham to the Board of Directors. So congratulation to all those folks, uh, we will now be, um, the board will now be working to stand itself up. And so that's great news. I also wanted to highlight, uh, a very nice thank you letter that the mayor and I received um, regarding the marathon in the heavy half. Uh, so Tony Hoffman works with, uh, organization, uh, that has essentially a, a, a mission to raise money for veterans and first responders suffering from PTSD, and they just wanted to extend a thank you to our police department for all the support of the marathon in the heavy half. Um, they, they said, just wanted to thank, uh, interim chief Ken Chavez and administrative supervisor Perla Flores. Thank them both for their hospitality and bringing us home, uh, as far as the team, as successful finish for them, so good, great news on that, and then uh, that is my segue to hand the rest of my time over to our interim chief. He has a report on how, um, the events went, uh, recently. Uh, we definitely feel like our streets and police department have been working very, very hard on all the events that have been happening. And so I'm gonna yield my time to him, uh, and then I may actually, I'm gonna drop off because I need to, um, get back to tend to a family emergency. It's, it, so before that, I guess I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the citizens? Thank you, Laura.
And I almost forgot, there was one other, uh, small announcement, I just wanted to congratulate Chapin and his wife. Um, we have a new voluntary city employee. Um, she is, uh, she is a healthy, what did you say, Chapin, eight pounds, ten ounces?
Eight pounds, ten ounces. She's, uh, she's beautiful, and she looks nothing like me.
Well, congratulations, uh, we are very excited, and thank you, Chapin. I know you are supposedly on paternity leave, but uh, it also, paternity leave, sometimes it looks like a city council meeting, we didn't tell you that.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Nice, thanks, Laura.
To Charles. Your honor, city council, uh, quick report on the events from this past weekend. Um, as you know, the one hundred mountain bike camp was in town this whole weekend long, a good coordination with them as far as things went. And we had a camp ride out on Saturday morning, we did a lead out for that, it was safely done, getting the riders out, and they came back through the afternoons. They went smooth there, no injuries, no accidents, no issues. Um, on, yes, on Tuesday morning, we had the firecracker five hundred. Uh, five, excuse me, firecracker five K race. Uh, we worked with Public Works to make sure all the street sign, the street closure signs were out on Harrison, not too early, but yet not too late. So we didn't want to impact businesses the night before, so we made a decision to put them out that, we'll do that Monday morning, or Tuesday morning, excuse me. So, um, they were put out, uh, we had, uh, officers lead, because it's a five K, and it goes on some really busy streets. We had an officer do the complete lead out on West Sixth, Franklin McQuethy, over to Mountain View, and then Mountain View to Harrison, and Harrison, Harrison South. Because it's a, those really busy streets, we wanted to make sure there was not gonna be any issues or safety factors for the runners. So we had the car lead the entire way through Harrison, and then of course blocking streets off on Harrison when they started coming down the main street. Uh, everything went smooth there, no problems, no issues, and then that, uh, followed into the July fourth parade, we had an officer lead the parade. And we also had him bring the tail up and street closure there, of course, that goes. And then we, uh, coordinated that and moving over to the, uh, airport event, and that kind of had, going over there, showing our presence there as well before we got back to normal duty, so. Real proud of how the officer did this weekend, uh, through a holiday weekend, and working also with Public Works to making sure everything was done, and people know that streets are closed and stuff. And of course, this, uh, this Thursday is the first, uh, concert in Zeit's Park, so we'll do a presence there as well, just to make sure everybody feels comfortable, and we're crossing our fingers for good weather. Any other questions? That concludes my break.
Um, I, you've never done the whole round of five K, so I think that's really a good idea. Just, just in case if something, you know, I missed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. There's a huge safety factor, there's, a runner always loses when it comes to a car. And sometimes people just fail to see him, so by having a police car in the lead, it alerts everybody, all the riders, uh, off-road vehicles, whatever, it could be on those busy streets, to make sure that those runners are safe, and then they, they can complete it without having to worry about dodging traffic and so on.
Does the hall thing put, like, corner monitors at some of those corners?
Well, I would tell you that they do, but i- it helps, but again, throughout the road leading, it, it helps a lot because it alerts everybody coming through, that somebody's coming, and then there's, of course, the crowded runners afterwards that you can see, but it starts off with a lead vehicle detained.
I have to tell you, I'm a little surprised you do vehicles ever stay in front of me, that you.
Hey, you know, I had, uh, a good runner himself that was in the lead, so he kind of gauged that accordingly, so, one of my, uh, most fittest officers moving the lead, so I have to.
Or any other questions, for the chief? Thank you very much, what a busy weekend.
That's okay.
In the series of minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, an additional note, um, I know there's always concerns on the Fourth of July, and the days leading up to it, even a few afterwards, about fireworks, fireworks complaints. I will tell you, after a long period of law enforcement, the two busiest days of the year are the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve. Barnum. So, a recommendation that may be clear, and I would make for future years. That if you don't want these types of complaints, you don't allow firecracker stands in your city and in your county. Now, we didn't have one in the city this year, but there was one right across the line over on Thirteenth and Harrison, Thirteenth and Pop, excuse me. And if there's a supply, there'll be complaints. But if you cut down on the supply, you'll cut down on the complaints. A- and there's numerous stories, there are stories in this year's Gazette and post about the effects of fireworks on dogs and veterans and people with PTSD, people with anxiety. You know, yes, we have announced fireworks displays, which you had down over on the hill, which is great. It's the unplanned, unannounced, late nights, days and days and nights up to it that cause issues, so my recommendation is if you don't want to see those complaints, uh, that you not allow fireworks stands in your city and in the county. And that'll cut down on the risk. Just an opinion, after numerous years working for the July.
Thank you. Any thoughts on that from city council?
Uh, well, I think we didn't have any in the city, there's not much we could do about, I don't even have any goodies on there.
Probably not, this is a personal observation, it seemed like there were less or fewer, uh, personal fireworks, at least
I agree.
here around my house that I, I heard in years back, I don't know why, it's like, you know, I don't know what to attribute that, but it was noticeable.
Right, I mean, and, um, I did speak to, um, county, uh, county manager Burman about it, it was kind of giving my perspective as far as it goes. This weekend in Denver, and we're all there, where there's a couple of homes that burned down because of those fires, fireworks, and you have an added threat here because you're right next to forests, and if something happened, you have a lot of old homes that, uh, were built way before modern fireworks. And one small spark on a, on a old road, and they're gonna go up. And because of the close proximity, because it's a downtown home, it could be catastrophic. So, you know, I, I know people love that, hey, it's the Fourth of July, we gotta have fireworks. But caution and prudent thought has to come into play as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this time we have a discussion about dark skies. Uh, Mr. Picken has agreed, he first brought this to me two or three months ago. It's something that's been talked about for years in Whiteville, it's also something that, that our, our city administrator, Laura Stodden, so he has been involved with in a previous position in Utah, where she actually, uh, helped put a dark side ordinance in place, so she's well versed in this. Uh, I wanted Luke to, to come share with us what, what he knows and, and what he's learned, um, as a part of our, our discussion, would you leave us out?
Mr. Mayor, city council, uh, appreciate y'all taking the time to consider this, I know I have dropped by some, uh, readings from newspapers occasionally, I pulled something onto your email, I always appreciate getting reply to those emails, so thank you to those of you who replied emails. Uh, first thing, I just want to make sure the gentleman was just talking to constituents. See if this is something, this is just me, this is just me and Lori, uh, talking about, you know, what, what can be, right, dark skies. If you heard people talk about this, you hear people, uh, talk about the Alco Sun, you know, it's too bright, everything that happened with UZR X. Making sure they had, uh, they're not getting light pollution coming out of the area, whole areas. Um, things like Jesse, uh, so I would like you just, please just take, take some time and talk to your constituency, and you work, work read, by the way, uh, right up on Seventh Street, and, uh, I really think that this, you know, when I moved up here, I went and saw the Orion, or the Orion did meteor shower uh, on the east side, and it was like changing, it was unbelievable, and I would just like for everybody to kind of have that ability to notice something like that. And I think that Whiteville's a great place for that, it's another distinguishing factor, uh, that can continue to keep Whiteville unique is this ability to go into this whole dark sky initiative, and then I think it would also add another leg to our tax base, especially when it comes to tourism. And in this case, it would be starved, there's some, uh, galaxy gazing, uh, spectacle when the planets come out. As for the history, uh, of everything else, I, it's just, some of this kind of just pop up on my radar occasionally, so I would just bring it to you as, as the, uh, city council to see what you thought, it sounded like anything you want to build a border, but what was it, you have been hearing from, uh, people in our community, they're concerned about the possibility of light pollution. Losing the ability to see the Milky Way, you know, on a regular night. Isn't that some of your constituency is interested in keeping, um, especially if we continue to see more new builds, uh, in around the city as well. So that's about all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, real short, would it be okay if I said if everybody has any questions for you?
Yeah, I, absolutely.
Um, couple of questions. What are the specific requirements to be a dark sky?
So on that website, darksky, and then also the one from Wet Mountain down from Westwood, I'm hoping to get their ordinance, and I'm just passing it to you. Then you have a lot of ordinances in there, it looks like there will be, you will make recommendations um, to new builds and for current, um, current businesses to adapt their lighting systems so that they point down as opposed to pointing up, or like in all three sixty, it's mainly pointing down. And they talk about a process like that, but, uh, there will be some monetary, uh, transitions of the light fixtures and lights. And then there will be some ordinances that could possibly be built.
And then how does that affect private property?
I think that you would just make recommendations to, to private properties, but like, hey, this is kind of something we're going for, we'd love to see uh, these types of little fixtures at the outside of your house, as opposed to these types of fixtures, for me, more, more or less, it looks like you're making recommendations. And then with, with new builds, though, I think that's where the ordinance would come through, you could have, you could say, this is what we, this is what we are requesting that you build.
Do other communities that you've heard of provide funding for people to switch out?
Yeah, so it looks like if you look through that, then there's a lot of stuff on those couple pages, but yes, there are ways to help with this. And with those issues, one of the things that gentlemen who wrote to me, I poured you his, I poured it his email, the site's not coming to talk to you right now, so the council. That, that was, uh, to get, and to start funds, like have these dark sky parties, have these, start doing, um, uh, parties, and then start to raise funds to help offset these costs, because it will, it will cost now.
Yeah, I don't like, I'm, I'm doing.
Yeah, well, for sure.
Okay.
Just one comment from plan, a, a lot of cities will have their exterior lighting regulations adopted within their zoning code, and there's, you know, all the variety of ways where that can get implemented, but um, you know, you can, you can see like, um, And there's, you know, all the variety of ways where that can get implemented, but um, you you can see like um, Spink was saying that. You can require that for new construction, uh, for, you know, major remodels or something like that. Um, and then you, some cities will have like a sunset clause, a reasonable sunset time period for uh for, you know, citywide. Whether that's, you know, a decade or two decades or something, or um for those existing light exterior light fixtures that are not part of a, you know, a new construction project to get switched up.
I think for a big and so vendors and.
Well, a couple of things that occurred to me. Number one, I was thinking about the whole dark skies thing, and I thought, you know, okay, that's downward lighting and control the looms, got all that. But wherever you have a flag. The the rule says that it has to shine up at the flag. Uh, actually, it said that it light the flag. I don't know why it couldn't shine down at the flag, but that's a whole different logistics issue. And so I was thinking, look, two of my own town rock houses, we have City Hall and many other places around town. I don't know. That that did occur to me that that would be a a a violation of dark skies, even the thought process. So.
A lot of cities, codes like exterior lighting regulation will have certain extensions for, you know, certain, you know, one fixture allowance for certain, you know, types of. Things like you.
Yeah, that seems to defeat the purpose, that's all. Yeah, that's just a thought.
Uh, to give more of our street lights.
Well, I'm glad you answered the question, because Lori and I talked about that before CML. We went to CML, she uh talked to Kelly Flanagan. I was able to go and say hi to Kelly, because she used to be our district liaison, uh, and she is fantastic, and they moved her up in the company. But now she's she's over the entire state. And so Lori said, would the kind of dark skies ordinance, would Excel be willing to participate in that? And she was enthusiastic about it. She said, absolutely, we would we would be part of that. And so that, you're right, that to begin, we've got some of these lights out here that are four hundred looms, you know. And we tried to get a change. We got, we tried to get a change many years ago, and it's it it has been a very slow process, just like speed.
Nothing was fast to accept.
Okay.
I wasn't.
Any other thoughts about?
I had one question. The West split, I mean, it's just great. I saw firsthand that um. You know, definitely for most tourists. And when I was there, there was a college class, and a professor that was spending the night here having dinner, they were starbazing. Uh, so is there a local group that's interested in trying to promote this and, you know, having like the starbazing parties that you just mentioned?
Uh, if if there is, I'd love to talk to them. I don't believe so. And again, it was like in this K Melas issue. The the gentleman uh from West split said, get your group together. Who are these people? Who are, who would like to do this? Yes, and then and then come over to City Council and say, we've been doing these parties. I don't think there is currently.
So we're not quite there yet.
Correct. Is there an inclination on the part of City Council to move in that direction? Do we need more information? What do you think?
Yeah, I got some stuff.
Yeah.
Please.
I entirely agree, Mr. Picken, on this. Um, I think the city and the county have spent. A lot of time and effort to protect our natural uh resources, our, you know, our our trails and. The the experience that people who recreate in the outdoors have. Um, and I think it's a perfect extension to protect our night sky, which is the experience that people who recreate at night, so to speak. You know, have. Um, I I just think it's a natural extension of that same thought process that we, that we have. I think it's the International Dark Sky Association that actually has different criteria. There's different, different, um. I guess certifications that you can get, uh, as long as as far as how dark sky you are. Uh, which might be ultimately a useful thing in terms of advertising um for us. And it has like what you need to do to qualify for it's one of those certifications. You can even get like a consultation from them, what you need to do. But I think as far as the city is, it makes the most sense to look at um. Adopting some ordinances for info and for new commercial builds. Because that's looking forward and then looking backward at everybody who already has lights. Um, that I think that's where a group could come in handy to start constructing, how can we do education and make things like. You know, motion sensor lights are advised, or for instance, lights that are on. Um, you know, like how can we make those kind of transitions or the contributing lighting affordable or at least enter it in mind if people are thinking of. Adapting in in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Christian. Sure, um, well, I've had a nighttime recreator, uh, love taking night walks. Uh, I love taking a night walks with my dog because he cannot handle the summer heat. Um, and I do stare up at the sky a lot, which is probably not the best idea, word of advice, but um. It it is genuinely beautiful if you do get in the right spot, and it is quite an experience, and I'm totally for it. Uh. I I would agree that we would need some type of funding for private, you know, homeowners that have been here for a while and may not have that income to. Have such changes in education alongside with it, uh, but it's a net benefit um overall. And I hope that it could address some of our lighting issues downtown with the flickering lights that just drive me nuts every time I walk by them. But um, I'm totally in there.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, Jason? Remedy?
I would support certainly pursuing ordinance and certain fill in development for sure. That's a great idea.
My 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 biggest concern might be things like gas. I mean, they 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 put out so much light and they keep those lights on all night. And it just feels useless to me. It feels like there there should be. On the other hand, a lot of people quit, a a lot of life was saved. So there's always that, you know, try trying to find that balance between, you know, dark skies and safety. Um, so I just, you know, maybe everybody needs to carry gun. I don't think. Yeah, I have a little mind.
It's all the rabbits setting off, so.
Any other final thoughts? I'm sorry Lori's not here to join in this because she has a lot of experience with it. That's gonna be great. Chapeau, any last thoughts?
I know, I I'm happy to facilitate this process as the council considers this. I have experience uh implementing, enforcing, sterilizing. Uh, codes, so that's actually, she she has experience with the codes themselves. And thedarkskies.org, they have, like you said, they have templates, so, you know, we're not to read a different wheel, but we just have to craft it to our community.
All right, any final thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Picken.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we uh we have a color municipal league conference takeaways. Uh, Lori, Hannah and I were there Monday, Tuesday and and Wednesday morning. Um, Hannah, would you like to give us some idea of of the sorts of things that you learned there?
Yeah, I um really appreciated that the professionals, especially in the municipal court class, and also the court for. Um, they have a lot of scenarios and and have a really nice question and answer. Um, with other professionals in the room to help us understand um. Little details and little nuances of what may be legal and what may not be legal and making sure you're operating um. Completely uh above board, even if there's like a little tiny mistake, we want to make sure that we're um taking care of that before we. Um, present anything to the public. Um, there was a lot of cool alternatives to jail for low income communities. Which I really appreciated. I know Judge Boyd also does a lot of community service and stuff like that as alternatives. Um, a lot of, I took away a lot of public safety and well-being um. From, I think that's what most people there are concerned about. I was not gonna be surprised that our room, our room's full of. Um, all types of professionals from municipal um governments around Colorado. Um, there was. Uh, attorneys and clerks and mayors and administrators and everyone there seemed to be genuinely interested in. Um, making sure that they're doing what's right for their city and their community. And I think that was the biggest thing that I took away.
That sounds like a very helpful.
Yeah, I think it was great. And I was able to do a little networking, um, but it was my first conference ever, so. But um, yeah, it was it was great. I got to meet a lot of people from all over Colorado.
Good. The first conference can be overwhelming.
Yeah.
This is this is my eighth. So I I kind of have an idea of what to do, who to talk to, where to go, uh, but. It it's it's formatted to be informative, especially for municipalities and all different kinds. The things that I took away from it, they, one keynote speakers was a gentleman from the national, the president of National Order. And he spoke to us and he was actually echoing a theme that had come up earlier in the day. And he talked about municipalities, the city making in in municipalities needs to be nonpartisan. And this, he he stresses very, very strongly, and a lot of other people did too. And I believed that for a long time. Tried to treat treat the city council and our decision-making as nonpartisan. So that was, that was one of the primary themes kept coming out of this. And the other was that municipalities need to maintain to the degree that it is popular, local and tour. And that kept coming up because of Senate Bill Two Thirteen uh that died in the House this last year. And uh, there was a lot of angst, uh, the governor spoke at one of the lectures. And uh, quite frankly, he was defeated on that, that he doubled that. And um, I have to tell you, the crowd was, he was, he was saying that to the wrong crowd. And it was very, very interesting, because when he was done, there was a smattering of applause, but it was nothing. Uh, you know, people, people looked at that as a teenage fit and they weren't interested. So it was, that was, you know, one of the more interesting things that happened at CML. Uh, is that Senate Bill Two Thirteen was very, very controversial because it preempted local zoning. The state preempted local zoning. And so uh, it was going to be challenged before it passed. Uh, but it didn't pass, so that's what we are now. And 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 he said, we're bringing it back bigger and better. Okay, good luck. I mean, you know, it it's it's a, it was a bad bill, it was poorly written. It 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 had no partnership involved. Color municipal league was not asked to come to the table on this. Uh, the Colorado Association, Speed Towns was not asked to come to the table on this. And in fact, they didn't actually show them the bill until the night before the vote. So it was governed by its rules. Um, so that that was a very, very controversial piece of the CML. Um, then we came out and come back, every single. Color municipal league, mayor summons, all these things, is all these communities have. Um, there's animosity in the public sector. And there's also animosity in the city councils. And I've said this before, we have a city council that works. And and one of the reasons it does is we're respectful of each other, even when we disagree. And so, but in a lot of places in Colorado, they do not have that. And uh, I hear it over and over again, and I'm always. If I come back, I'm very grateful for our community, you know, and for the city council. So uh, that that comes up every single time. Um, last one, please, Dola did a big presentation, brought some wonderful information about different bills and. And especially as it relates to um, uh, the assessed values. And how they're gonna try and handle those at the legislative level. So we, there's a, there's a valid issue coming out. Uh, this November, uh, that's gonna be an issue of three oh three. And quite frankly, it doesn't do very much, to be blunt. Uh, but it changes the values like for the 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 personal uh residential property valuation. Six point seven five to six percent and exempts the first fifty thousand dollars of uh of property value. So, um, they're trying, you know, but but there's a lot still to be done. Um, it will be interesting to see what, A, what comes of all these assessed values as. You know, before we have to declare our mills in December. Uh, and we'll we'll be talking about it as we go along, like, you know, the government doesn't have to collect all the money that's offered to them. And mills are the way to control that, based on our budget. So, uh, I've talked to county commissioners, uh. Uh, one county commissioner in particular, and they believe that, you know, they're headed the same direction in terms of the thought process. We'll see, we'll see what happens there, but it's going to be a very, very key conversation. Also, one of the managers in Dola was very concerned about cities and counties opting into one twenty three. I walked her after the meeting and said, we have, we have given permission to our our regional housing authority to opt us in. They wouldn't do that until they apply. You know, so we, you know, we don't, we won't be recorded as having already opted in. Uh, but when when they apply.
The building was this, what, for what, their list is?
One twenty three.
I'm sorry, problem two, three, prepare. I had understood that uh we were going to opt in. Spirit and just allow um. Hopefully, the regional housing authority, but any other entities possible apply, um, as.
Jackson, we gave Jack permission to opt in on our behalf. Yeah, she applause.
What was the concern that they voiced about that?
She was just worried that people weren't opting in, you know. But you said that quite right, but she was very worried people weren't opting in. She's, she's uh the head of of building housing. Uh, the division of housing. So it was, it was, it was a good conversation. Um, there was something about the the police department, uh, went to one of those seminars about police department in Row. And those people, two chiefs said, what we do is we meet often with our people. We're we're very close to our people. Now, our department is very small comparative. Even even smaller departments are like twenty to forty officers in the state than what Denver's eight hundred officers or?
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah, it was close. So that that came up, and I just thought it was very inspiring, a small department, and I actually think the chief's very, very close to your people, so. Um, but but, you know, you there are all these things you try and take out out of these seminars. You know, something that you think is helpful to your city.
It's interesting, interesting to say that story because uh, right now, we are amidst the last two years of the most difficult time career I've received in my career. Of recruitment and retention. Uh, I have never seen this bad.
They talk about that as well, so. Uh, last thing was, I went to a, one of the seminars on open meetings law. And I've always been told that if we send out, like, if I send out something to City Council and it says, please, uh, please don't reply all. I always thought that was good enough, and they're saying, that's not good enough. Shouldn't reply at all. You know, and the reason is, you have three different, if I say, please don't reply all, the three different city council members apply to me individually. Now could be perceived as a serial meeting. And so I'm just telling us, you know, when you get something like that, don't reply. And we're gonna have to kind of change, um, you know, how how we worry that. Uh, last thing, social media, there was a lot of talk about, you know, city council or any city officials using social media, just be careful. You know. Um, and that's, I mean, there there's so much going on there. Those are the things, those are my takeaways from CML. Any any questions about that?
I have one, yes, regarding uh when you mentioned. Uh, specifically with the prisoner um alternatives to going to jail. Uh, definitely interested in learning more about that, seeing if there's anything that we can do, given our situation currently. Um, as well as just generally given the idea of people committing nonviolent crimes going to jail. A little bit ridiculous to me, um. And kind of liking to explore that a little bit more and see what lies in ours and obviously not kind of overstep to. Uh, the judges, but at the very least, seeing what we can do about that.
No, I was just gonna say Judge Boyd has been really creative, especially not just avoiding jail, but avoiding um excessive fines. Uh, for people in our community and having alternatives like community service or even just coming to spend the day with me and going to St. George's. Um, and and giving um community members the resources to learn from mistakes. And and be better next time. And um, I do have um some some notes that I can send you now to to all of your lectures.
I agree.
Yeah.
Any other questions about CML?
Okay. Mary, I did have one good question.
Yes.
In the Dola meeting that we were in, there was a city advocate from, I think, Wes Minister, that had a question about how do you apply if you don't, if you don't meet the requirements.
Well, that that was, I haven't gotten to rock that up. She just played a dollar. I mean, and 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 so what she said is. She said, look, you you offer us all these possibilities. But then the rules you put in place, like like AMI or 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 in some cases actual, you know, uh, pay. Rates that that would apply to this. She said, nobody in my city can can meet those requirements. You might as well be off. Nobody in my city can, can meet those requirements. You might as well be offering us Mars, you know? It doesn't do any good to, to send this to us if we can't qualify for it. And so Rick Garcia was on, on the dais. He's, he's the, the head of Dola. And he said. I understand what you're saying. He said, but we're the implementation of these. We don't. You know, we're not the legislative, you know, body. We don't make the rules on these. We, we're just asking. But I thought it was a really, really, maybe not the answer she wanted to hear, but she wasn't wrong also. We see this all the time. In a lot of programs where uh the, the lingers set in place make it either very difficult or almost impossible. Uh to get people in housing. So. Yeah, nice catch on that. I, yeah, that was, that was strong. Any other questions? Did I see about? Okay, thanks very much. At this time, we have the flaming foliage relay temporary use program.
Thank you.
Mayor, we also have Sean Wery. We have Sean Wery on the Zoom. I believe Mandy right here absolutely coming to the front.
Okay.
And if I could just preemphasize all this, uh this event was in a three-year permit, but the owners of this event have changed. So I would just like to bring in the municipality council so that we can get the new owners approved for another three-year permit, but not much. If anything, and the event has actually changed. Go ahead, guys.
Thank you for having us. Um I'm Danny Mullin and then I, Sean is back in Windsor. Um he'll be joining us in Level tomorrow. Um we both run in Level. Uh so we, yeah, we're running fifty mile races this weekend with them a hundred. Um Mayor Paul T actually, for Kyle, a couple of years ago. So we're, we're attracting ourselves. Uh so we participated in. The, while Wes related to the thing, we've relayed several times uh previously with the fall. And Paul was really adamant about handing it over to people that uh wanted to treat the communities and the trails and everything that. The, the runs go through with the same respect he did. Um wanted to go to runners who will respect the local communities. And so. Um Sean and I are spending time over, um introducing ourselves and also the events of local communities. And so we're not changing anything uh that's happening. That event, we really want to see these relays grow for, for their. Just before the K D day run through, um Paul has been putting on the, the foliage for ten years. It'll be the ten year anniversary. And so this year, we're really coming in with not a lot of changes. We're just doing everything to status quo. We're still relating to any of the local nonprofit groups that are involved here. There's kind of a force. And that's kind of a part of what we want to do. These positively impact that, and other community, especially nonprofit groups. Um yeah, it's exchange party that runs through Weddell. So they hop on the mineral belt trail. And it's three point nine miles. They exchange at the high school. I think our permit time is Friday night, eight P M and on Saturday morning is six A M. So most people can let go about worrying about when we're here. But I, I, that's kind of the humorous of this growth is it would become something just like a long gray series that can use in a positive way.
Fantastic. You know, I, I have to admit that I never see them. At the, those times, you know, they're on their own. So what, what organizations do you, are, are, are useful to you in Level Lake County? For, for various, uh you know, like aid stations or whatever.
Really looking to connect more with local nonprofits in the community that want to help us with these exchanges. And again, they're all paid volunteer elders. And so we're looking for volunteers that just want to volunteer for the title of this nonprofit group. Um we're with the Lions Club, our item springs, the Fall Group. I think there are also other items strings, um thing as south, um Chief E County, Humane Society, you said about, and they're all ready to. So we're really looking at you guys and look at connection on. New groups that want to come out and, and then the aid stations are going and we're going to volunteer, we're going to pay those volunteer teams for their time. Um, you know, as it goes on, we also want, you know, kind of help, we're going to give this information to the community. Um I'm a little bored with the chamber in Windsor and Sean and I barely had to evolve with um everything there. So we want to do that same. Because we're dating in our Windsor community, but here in Level. So that's only our only task, but for this year, we're kind of just coming in privately. And just taking it over the first year, not kind of wiling up, just sticking kind of the same number of teams that Paul's ran in the last couple of years. But again, sure hoping to grow over there.
Okay, any questions?
Uh yes, I have one. Uh I actually volunteered for one of the races once uh through full circle. Uh one of the things that I noticed is it just wasn't really worth. Uh the intent of that risk because obviously it's not necessarily the most um. Uh friendly of hours to volunteer at, but um it was really hard on our team. For the money that we got, uh for our volunteers and we found that very difficult. And it's why we stopped, they stopped volunteering um at the races and helping out. Um that's just feedback, but the races went well when I was volunteering with them.
Yeah, thank you. We, we know that too. Uh we all celebrated the seventh anniversary, or second birthday this year. So Paul, I think, with the, knowing there was a decline in the races and you guys know this. Hold on, the race series here, but we need numbers from the sponsors and the partnerships in order to make it physically. Sustainable. Once we hit those and once we grow them, then we can. Actually pay any of our volunteers into the, with hours of work. Um what I've been doing right now, which is kind of the minimum that Paul's been paying. And so that's kind of our mission personally is to, you know, get sponsorships. Ramp up the teams so that we can. Pay more for volunteer groups.
Oh, the Chiefs and the Cowboys.
I think last year, it's gone twenty.
Correct, he had twenty last year. We're at like fifteen to sixteen right now, so we're trending towards twenty-five to thirty. So.
Yeah, so again, for this year, we're kind of seeking the same. Many people are, are not nervous, but we haven't done a lot socially wise. And we're trying to respectfully come into this. We want to make sure that we fully experience this from the race director standpoint before we, we leave go nationwide with it. Uh we have really big dreams of these relay races across over Colorado. They're the only ones I have in there across state. Rattner has seventy-seven mile races that they do um as far as relay teams go, but these are the only two that cross the state. So. Uh this year, we're kind of just aiming for quality and possibly impacting the community before we really put our marketing prowess behind it. What we next year, we can pay volunteer group or five hundred to, you know, three thousand dollars for their, their investment during the weekend. Then I'll also note that we have first time doing this. Um I, we have a run winter race series in Windsor. It's a fun set of races a year. For the Colorado, it's twenty seventeen. So we direct and completely coordinate all of the five Ks of the ultimate air resistance in Windsor. So they're not coming in blind to the race director role here. We know what we're doing on a local level. That is just our first time directing the cross state, but. Paul was amazing at what he did. Everything that Sean and I got from him between logistics and maps and waypoints and G P S coordinates and. You know, exactly when runners will come into this exchange and when they'll leave by, it's, it's a nice. Um little science project that he built over the years. And so we're thinking of something that he's well prepared us for.
And I will add that Paul was amazing to work with, with the city. He, he, he always had everything so organized and he. Spoke very highly of you guys and gave me warning that they would be taking over. And I just thought that was a really nice way to handle the whole transition. So I appreciate that.
That's good. Any other questions for Mandy or Sean? Chief, yes, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um ma'am, uh I have a couple of questions, you know. Long person, we're always worried about the safety of the public, safety of drivers, whatever you mix the two of them. So. Near Lake Twenty here, the three point nine miles along Highway ninety-one. Uh, not much of a shoulder. Right along traffic in the dark, early morning hours. What side of the road are they running on? The east or the west?
So they're running against traffic.
On the east side?
Yes.
So.
See, um reflected in us. They have flashlights on the front and on the back.
Okay, good.
Fire at, from dusk until dawn. So they kind of, with this hour start, any participants, volunteers and runners are required. To have, we have a volunteer in all of our exchange planes. Um cheerpoint that are making sure that anyone that's out there has that on and they're not, they're needing to be this far from the race. Um hopefully they're in the van. And so that's worked out well. Um and that also happens. They're also required.
Okay, great. Um so you cross an intersection there, not in view, but Safeway, which is on the safe side because there's no traffic coming from the east. But when you cross twenty-four to go into Letville in the twelve hundred block of Pobler. You're crossing mid-block.
Sean's that.
Because the, the mineral belt trail starts mid-block between twelve and thirteen. That's just outside the city.
My concern is that Chief Star for the question, that is in the city. The city limits, the city limits there on Highway twenty-four all the way past Safeway.
So that, that's my concern is that crossover piece when you cross over from the east side of twelve, correction, twenty-four. Over to the mineral belt, you're doing a mid-block. It's not a crosswalk. It's just.
The flashing light.
Okay, the metal trail, okay, flashing lights and, and a crosswalk. Okay.
Okay, so do you guys have anybody posted there that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So that's, that's great. That's the only, that was the one place that I was confused about was that crossing point. Uh that I can see that there's a direct conflict where a runner could get her.
Yeah, we have this major crossings. Um we're working with entities all across the state. It's like one hundred bits. State highway and we've got state patrol out there doing that. Uh if it's something as local as this, it's a volunteer out there. And a lot of these groups have been volunteering for Paul's race for the past ten years or twenty years. And so they're very well versed in what they're doing in this.
Okay, and lastly, cell phone coverage along ninety-one is spotty. So are you guys using sat phones at all for emergency contact?
Yeah, so we have uh radio contact for all the volunteers at those exchanges through radios. But then also our, our vans, the teams that are supporting the runners are instructed on exactly along the course where they're safe to go over. So they might send their runner off, pull up a mile ahead, park them in a dirt road, wait till their runner passes to ensure safety and then they continue to pull up. We kind of, we call it leapfrogging. So we enter a track that we're at safely, pull off on the side roads, see your runner, make sure they're okay, make sure they're confident. I think this, most of the time, sometimes runners will venture out on this and think they're good to go, but two miles and they get scared. It's dark, it's middle of the night. So a lot of opportunities along the course, but we're safely advising, pull off. Your runner's freaked out, doesn't want to continue on. That's then my custom by, is scared of them. They can hop in the van and take off. So no one's luck out there to deserve it. They're very much.
Or a medical break or something like that. Okay.
Yes.
All right, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, good questions.
Any other questions?
He might reach out to Bud City Mountain Sports, who does a lot. Uh they're, they're the high school um. Ski and bike teams and they do a lot of aid stations too, as we're going to cover them.
Sean's keeping that with us.
Bud City Mountains.
Yeah, I think as, as it goes forward, we've participated in these races for years. We're also always looking for guidance on it. We feel like as we go forward, if there's a better route, because the trail system's going to develop. If there's something better than ninety-one, we're open to that because we'll be continually get busier. And so I. I think in the coming years, we might be proposing other changes as. New developments come up on trails or roads that are maybe safer for our runners. I want to see this one forever and ever, but also we know that some of these have maybe been this year.
Uh that's a long ways down the road to complete that trail over from Copper Mountain, but it's all planned out, but they have some roadblocks. So that's a problem.
Any suggestions?
Any questions? Thank you, Andy. Uh I'm getting a hand motion, please.
Uh that's moved to approve the temporary use permit for Ram Hall Road Relay LLC. I mean, the bullet relay from eight P M Friday until six A M Saturday on September eighth and ninth, twenty twenty-three. With the attached charges. Said approval being good for three years with due time twenty-five.
Laura Henson, Timon.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh I just love to thank you for continuing that tradition. Uh I know I've done a while, once twice. But actually, I didn't complain for twenty thirteen, we had a terrible, so then we got to do it. Well, Paul, please.
Thank you, Ken.
May I, Abby?
Yes.
Some member comments?
Yes.
Mayor Karchan Green?
Yes.
That's the name of the land?
Yes.
Uh council member, the same?
Yep.
And council member, the council member, grant or assets.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have orders of the students' research report for Title seventeen zoning definitions, table uses and then makes, and this is our expected reading. So this will be a public hearing. And so we will. You will be supported. Um. City council adopted this order. It's on first reading on May sixteen of twenty twenty-four. Better be honest, you later. Because it's the second and final reading of the ordinance, city council will follow these steps. First, I will ask the city staff to give any presentation. Or provide any information that they have with the council or about the way the city council, one chance to ask questions instead. And have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next, I would like the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Um any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Final council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Uh at this time, I would ask for the staff presentation.
Mayor Council, good evening. My name is Chief LaFons for record. I'm the planning director for the city of Letville. Uh Mayor Council, this ordinance at the dot on the second reading would amend Title seventeen of your code, your zoning code. Um to update the city's uh table abuses and land use definitions. Uh reorganize and streamline Title seventeen, also make certain amendments to. Um zoning code regarding administrative permits, special uses and short-term rental licenses. Since first reading, there has been one revision and uh the last council meeting. There, uh the council last staff to look into uh Lake County advocates' interest in um pursuing a permanent support causing location. And how that would, uh how group home use uh would be, uh would be allowed in the commercial zoning district. I have done some research on that. Uh I want to just preface with, you know, any, anytime we're looking at. Um, you know, a code amendment or a zoning, a rezoning, you know, for a certain group, a certain use, we, we certainly avoid spot zoning. Uh it's not a good policy. Um but I have, I have done some research. Uh so just a reminder, the consultants uh proposed amendment would remove the conditional use allowance. Uh for both the retail core zone and the commercial zone. The site that the advocates are looking at is in the, is in the commercial zone. Uh so I've done a couple of things. I've looked at the, the zoning code's purpose statement for the commercial zoning district. And also the comprehensive plan and future land use map designation for this. Um so the purpose statement in the zoning code for the commercial zoning district does not mention any, any type of residential use. It's not envisioned residential use. The comprehensive plan and the future land use plan um designate that area as highway commercial. Um and the description of character that is in the comprehensive plan also does not envision any type of residential use. Uh so there's, I think, a couple of considerations when we're looking at this. Um one is that, you know, the. This is basically removing what was already uh in, in the code, changing what's already in the code. Um I think there's three, three additional considerations. You know, one, we have a housing shortage. Uh so anytime we're looking at uh a use, cha-changing use allowance. Uh that has something to do with housing, whether it's on, you know, the, the part of the spectrum that's, you know, closest to homelessness. Or, you know, the um, the platinum, the upper ends of the, of the spectrum regarding, you know, high AMI, you know, uh. Uh deep street housing or anything. I think we always need to consider the housing crisis that we're experiencing. Um so I think considering the housing shortage, this would allow a, a type of residential use, which should uh, which is a conditional use. So, so meaning that this council would have a review of this before it was approved. Um also considering that the comprehensive plan is almost ten years old due for an update. And, you know, two thousand and fifteen was before the, you know, the, all the changes we've seen in housing in the recent years. Um so I, I won't put too much weight on that. Um and then also that uh group homes are already a, um are supposed to be a conditional use in the transitional commercial. Uh zoning district, which is also of course a commercial zoning district. Uh so staff is, is recommending that we revert in these, in the amendments that I have in front of you. Uh revert the use allowance from prohibited back to conditionally allowed, which is what is in, in the zoning code. Uh that would be for the commercial zoning district only. from prohibited back to conditionally allowed, which is what is in in the zoning code, uh, that would be for the commercial zoning district only.
You know what page that is on?
Sorry.
Twenty-five.
Thank you, thanks. That's a big packet, so taking up a lot of page numbers. All right, so um that's the only amendment we have made since first reading, uh, we've been over this, you know, I think one of the um, the um key things that this ordinance is is doing is it is allowing multifamily use uh up to four units to be a by right uh use in our resident, in in most of our zoning districts, which in terms of addressing the affordable housing crisis uh is really a really important thing, especially for private sector development coming in, building infill housing. Um, and that that was uh recommendation coming from both our consultant um who initially worked on this project, and also from the policy, the Housing Coalition Policy Advisor, Gene, um, so we're aligned on that. Um, that is it for me, um, and recommending that the council approve this ordinance on second reading.
Any questions for him? Take them, yes, please, what is?
Um. The four plex, how does that come up against our housing density of nineteen units per acre?
Let's see here, um.
Great question, actually.
Yeah, yeah, so so planning and zoning commission is is working on is working on code amendments that would address the the density piece of this right now, so you'll you'll be seeing that in a month's time. Um, this only is addressing the use allowance, so uh in your zoning code, you have kind of a table of dimensional criteria for each, for each zone. So this would allow uh what, whether the regional housing authority or the city of Leadville or the private, the private sector developer to check, check that box in terms of the use uh being allowed, not having to go through public hearing process, and make that whole process smoother. Um, but they would still have to meet the density criteria, but we are separately looking at uh at density, yeah.
Uh, I want to answer that in further detail, uh, the answer is, uh, we intend uh to go further with density. Right now it's nineteen per acre, and what that means is when you apply that formula in a given lot, uh, it could include an A U. What we plan to do is the calculation will be built on forty units per acre in the individual calculations for individual lots. However, um developers who are doing either three or four plexes would need a density bonus in order to build uh those extra units on a given lot, right, right, go wrong here, and to get that density bonus, they're going to have to provide uh one uh affordable housing unit as part of their uh development.
Yeah, a couple of clarifications on that, so it'd be the, the mayor mentioned forty long units breaker, so that would be kind of the the maximum in our R two district, which is the um our biggest zone, it includes most of the residential mixes, and then, I'm sorry, I just want the term of the sentence, oh yeah, and then the the density bonus, so so that forty long units breaker would be for three units or more. And so it's it's not touching, it's not touching um basically the until though, the what we're trying to see with uh one and two unit, they'll basically accessory long units and deep plexes. Uh, so that would be allowed by right of forty long industry, but they would have to get a density bonus if they're doing three units or more on a property in order to be able to that density bonus, like the mayor said, they'd have to dedicate uh basically that voluntary deep residential housing.
Okay.
But that's, that would be related to this in terms of how it affects residential infill, uh, but that would be a separate ordinance that would become, you have to get to that number.
Well, that's my concern, it's your density, just a question.
Okay, sound good.
It is, it's it's complicated, yeah, but but what Chayton's come up with, I think, works well for us, there'll be a great conversation, yeah. Any other questions before staff?
Okay.
Or please, we're.
Um, I'm curious about the definition per household living. Uh, and it's on page thirty-four of my packet, I think is the first time I saw it, it's in the redline version. And I noticed that there's no upper limit for unrelated adults living. Uh, and I know some communities have that, where there's a tension between providing affordable housing and maintaining character neighborhoods. So is that question something that staff has considered and decided not to include for some reason?
Yes, right, it um, that's a a good, a good uh thing that you've noticed there, I did ask the consultant about that, because this is coming from the consultant's um recommendations, and and we may have talked about this in one of the um, the planning zoning commission work sessions, there there's a lot in here, so um, bear with me as I try to remember here, but I think what the the discussion was surrounding is that, um, I guess we're doing a two-fold. It's one of those things that allows for affordable housing, so when, you know, a group of five persons, they're working in ski cooper, working in service industry, come together and they're uh they're renting a home, it, it's one of those additional things that is is um more permissive for affordable housing. And then, and I think the other thing we talked about is, and like the definition of the nuclear family, you know, is changing, um, you know, i- in terms of socially what we are, what we are accepting, and um family dynamics are are changing, and we want to be more accepting of that. And so I I think those were two, the two main reasons why it is written that it is proposed.
I would like to add another uh potential reason, though it probably wasn't in uh in mind, but uh, I'm a strong believer of, if you take it away, is there a alternative for current living situations? Um, a lot of our immigrant families, um, uh, they live together in these condensed units, um, partly because there is no alternative, that is their only option, and that is the way that they survive, and it is completely considered homelessness by most aspects, but um in you know, uh criminalizing and especially enforcing, uh, then you are creating even bigger problem of uh making, without any proper solution, without providing these people with housing, um, you're creating much bigger issue than uh what it already was, which is the big issue. So I I just want to be careful around that, because I know, um, literally currently working at Safeway, they do not pay enough to be able to rent here without having multiple roommates. Um, it is very difficult in our community, and it is intensely expensive, and additionally, there are also, as you mentioned, plenty of different dynamics with relationships and our modern age.
And and you're right, that a lot of communities do have that in there, just to work as a consultant for for student housing developers, and and that was one of the main things that we looked at when someone was coming in and trying to build housing in the in the community, multifamily housing in the community, was there prohibited ordinance that they could put a cap at, that no more than four unrelated or five unrelated, and there was some certain threshold for developer, if it was, if it was more than, you know, three or four, they just would not, they would not build in that community. Um, but, you know, a lot of those ordinances were put in free, free housing, you know, our local housing crisis or nationwide housing crisis, and so I think that is one of the things that we're uh probably considering dialing back, uh, considering the housing issues that we're experiencing.
I think.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
Good answer.
I did want to add that one of the, one of the things that we had planted in the past, that we've taken very seriously here, is parking. And uh, and I don't believe that's in these changes, but it will be a future ordinance changes where we will allow for an individual living unit uh does not require parking space, but every additional living unit requires a parking space, and they have to be valuable, if that's possible. Is that, will you understand it, Chayton?
Yeah, correct, so I I think maybe another way to say what the mayor is saying is that with some of these additional use allowances that are that are being made here to address housing, we are also making some other code revisions that will address some of the impacts um that additional housing could create, and and the council will have an opportunity, but they're within months to review those uh those additional changes to kind of manage some of the impacts.
Thank you, any other questions or concerns? I'll say what I've said before, they're working on this for about six years now, uh, nearly, and we have, we had a huge interruption during COVID, and it's coming back, uh, consulting that we we've used has helped us develop a table of uses that simplifies our overall approach to to code and and uh and the table of uses, because it was so complicated, and it was incomplete. There were just things in there that we hadn't accounted for, things we no longer need to account for. So, uh, this has been a really, really pretty, pretty interesting. Also, there, we will, we will have forgotten something. Any other questions or concerns? But at this time, I would like to open uh this up to uh public comment. Is there anybody in in the room would like to speak uh to City Council on this technical agenda, please?
Can I sit here?
Uh, you can, I think, and this is people settle which is wrong.
All right, so, um. The planning director advocated the con plan, um, revision, um. Hopefully, you'll review the case, the court case I filed, because the other, there's a thing in Colorado law that if you make an administrative decision, and although it doesn't fulfill what the requirements of the law are, if nobody complains about it within thirty days essentially, then it's okay. So there was a quite a few um things that were not considered in the con plan at that time, and these were how pulling the community, I think it was, put it consistently. So I would hope that all the requirements of the con plan and the statute uh mandates will be fulfilled. None of us will wait to see if somebody objects and, you know, or we just, you still have to talk about it. Okay, so with these, uh, I have, I guess, four things, uh, with these parking things for uh, for uh rear end parking, so the alley oriented, um, I don't think a dirt parking spot constitutes a structure, but I'm fairly certain that a paved parking section does constitute a structure. And so there's a setback from the alley of six foot, and so we would have to, um, have some kind of a definition of how big of a space you have, you know what I'm talking about? Just can't say, well, we've got space for two people back there, and then, well, let's, it it should be a kind of described about how much of a space a vehicle needs, whether it's a big truck or a small car or something like that, six foot from the end of the alley.
Do you mean responding these one by one or everything?
Way to the end, okay, and then there'd be a snow, snow removal consideration. Do these property owners pile the snow into the alley on the main street, or, you know, it's supposed to be put on their property, but that doesn't always work, because my neighbor puts it on the right away, and the city has to haul it off. Um. So that's that issue. Then, um. Would you like to respond issue by issue, or would you like to let me finish?
Uh, I'm I'm taking those, it might be easier for me to respond issue by issue, if that's our view.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so just to clarify, so this ordinance that's in front of us tonight is not making any changes to the parking code, but that's just with something else that we're we're working on, but it's just in progress.
Good.
Um, when, when we're work up, when we're working on that, we'll definitely be looking at what our parking is considered a structure right now in the code, I'll double check, but I believe parking is not considered a structure, so it's not subject to any setback requirements, uh, because it's not considered an above-grade improvement.
Okay.
Uh, and then, and then I have to look at the snow storage now, there's, there's minimal snow storage requirements in the off-street parking code right now. That's a for that response.
Okay, so, um, now, uh, we talked about the how the Ps are eliminated from this thing, from the table of uses. And you said that for you and some of the administrators, it was easier to look through this without the Ps to respond to um someone that was, you said you got M form calls a week, you got property investors, you want to know what they could and couldn't do, that's one of the means. So my idea on this is, I'm, and that'll be the rest of what I have to say, why? Uh, the Ps should stay there. Um, a solution to that would be create a spreadsheet, and for uh this table of uses, and then um print up the table of uses for the code, and then when you need uh a current copy of the code, just, just punch a big in here, eliminate all the Ps on the spreadsheet, and you see I'm talking about, that makes sense, doesn't it? And then you could have a copy without the Ps in it. And the reason I want the Ps to be on there is because um pretty much City Council Leadville has this, has a pattern and practice, and I know the chief have, is probably aware of this in the newspapers, of uh pattern, at least the term pattern and practice, of being cavalier in the way it applies these code things. Um, I have two examples of that, actually three. So in my neighborhood, um, at one point, they they allowed four CUPs, one which was not in defined one business. And part of the the presentation from these people were, was about how they turned a a development, a shopping center in Florida around. And so they were, they were claiming that they were going to turn my neighborhood around. That's not good. Um, and they should have done that, and then when all these problems started happening, the city uh changed the code from making it mandatory, which shall review um anyone adversely affected by the CUP, the neighbors, to a discretionary may review the CUP things. So uh I think that code thinks you go back to the way it was.
Mr. Process, you're at about five minutes now, so please hold your comments for right now, if you would please. I want to see if anybody else in the room, uh, or on Zoom would like to speak uh to public comments on this ordinance. Seeing, I would like to allow you one more minute to finish up your thoughts.
Okay, so, um, Melon's on, it was prohibited to do manufacturing over here. They were allowed to do manufacturing, the code prohibited, prohibited manuf- uh warehousing over here, they were allowed to do warehousing. Both of these things violated the code, because they were clearly prohibited. Instead of having, um, you know, making this retail, I mean, for friendly for tourism, it somewhat shuts out tourism, certainly across the street. Um, so I would like to, that's my justification in the spreadsheet, keep those Ps in there, because I want to see council saying, well, you know, there's a blank space, you can do whatever you want.
All right, so just to provide a response, that note, both from this process and from the council, just so a little bit of background, so right now, in in the code, right, on the table of uses has a P in every individual square of the of the Paul Monroe for anything that's prohibited, and a C for anything that is allowed. The consultant, uh, their, the consultant's proposal is to remove the, anywhere there's a P, remove that, and so the table reads a bit more cleanly when someone is reviewing it in terms of what is allowed on property, which is ninety, I'm I'm a separate number here, I would estimate that is ninety percent plus of the of, uh, you know, with the times that we're looking at the table, trying to answer a question, okay, what is allowed on this property? Uh, so it makes the ti- table easier to read in terms of understanding what is allowed, and if something is prohibited, then there's a, there's a new statement that's added at the very top of the table, and I can show uh show that on the screen, it just clarifies that anywhere that there is a uh blank space, that means that the use is prohibited. Uh, so the 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 amendment is certainly for um the ease of use of the of the table, and I'm considering the, um, I guess the nature in which we are most likely to use the table.
So you have, uh, if it's blank, it's prohibited.
Correct.
So it tends to work, or it could say, you know, R for right by, right by use.
Right.
Uh, could say C for condition use permit, could say A for administrative. Right?
Correct.
Are those all the possibilities?
Yes.
I've just seen, okay, all right. Okay, good. Okay. Thank you, uh, we seem to have no more comments at this point, although you made some very important statements, thank you. Um, at this time, I would indicate a motion to close the public input portion in the public hearing.
Move to close the public input portion of this public hearing.
All right, so the second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? At this time, we are in deliberation.
So as a heads up, uh, that table can be found on page sixty-one.
And that, if you'll remember in the packet, there were uh, there were kind of two sets of red lines in your packet. Um, the one on sixty-one is what came over from the consultant, and then there's a, there's a further update that's that's after we kind of accepted all those and made some additional revisions, city attorney, and that's on page ninety-one. So the mo- the most updated version is on page ninety-one. And that's going to include the the finalized statement about the uses that are um prohibited uh being a blank square.
I would like to share some insights from planning and zoning, we talked about, you know, what what Chayton had talked about, um, uh, making conditions permit uh for housing issues that that might, might crop up, if you will. Um uh making conditions permit uh for housing issues that that might might crop up, if you will, in the commercial zone, we have commercial zones on both these ends of town, both on the north side up to Twelfth Street and on the south side all the way, all the way from from the curb. Down to the weather, and um. There's some, there's some space in there, and so we speculated, saying what would happen? There's there's ten acres that sits right there next to Big R, just south of Big R. What would happen if somebody came in and wanted to do affordable housing in that ten acres? We would like the ability. In a conditional use permit to to at least have that conversation. Uh and make sure, you know, that 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 we're satisfied that it's being done the way we'd like for it to be. And the other, you know, the other, you know, fully Antoni exploring is there, uh what if they sold? To somebody who wanted to build a parking lot, I don't know, it's all very speculative, I understand, but we wanted to leave ourselves the option for those things in spaces that are currently mostly not well used, so uh that was, that was the conversation to follow, so. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns?
I think what's good, uh uh given that the blanks will be filled out with a very clear. If it's blank, it's prohibited, I think that kind of addresses that issue and it makes it very clear that legally speaking, it is prohibited and there is no excuse of that way, and you're just taking in the legal action and violating your personal code if uh council were to go against that. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, um. At this time, I would ask for a motion, please, on secondary.
Luna then moves to adopt ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty three, in ordinance mandating uh various sections of chapters five point twelve, seventeen point oh eight, seventeen point forty eight, seventeen point fifty, and seventeen point sixty of the Ledville Municipal Code uh concerning updates. Um and the table of uses and land use definitions on second reading with the attached findings.
One second.
Is there any other discussion? I I do want to say this has been quite the effort, we've worked on it for years, but we could not have brought this across the finish line without uh Chayton. You know, separating the planning zone and now city council through a really complicated uh process, uh but we're, I think we're going to be better off for it, thank you. Will call please.
Mayor Prochey Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutzen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Luna Land?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Lavi?
Yeah.
And councilmember Phil and Grant Harris.
Okay, uh so at uh seven thirty five, uh this public hearing for uh ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty three, is closed.
Looking forward to have the discussion uh with that city.
It's really, it, we we want you to get your head wrapped around it, I think what Chayton thought was really was.
Thank you.
I'm setting you up.
Thanks.
She takes five minutes, five meetings to wrap her head around it, but.
Okay. Uh this time, we have one just something three, series of twenty twenty three, this is time seventeen, the national historic landmark district, these are amendments. Um regarding demolition, lookability, site visits, and it's in second reading. So we've uh we've debated this about for quite some time, but uh I will open uh this hearing at uh at seven thirty six. Um and at this time, I would like to ask for uh. Do we want to do a staff presentation?
Sure, thank you, yes. Alright, again, for the record, I'm Chayton Strong, planning director for the city level. Uh man council, this ordinance adopted on the secondary uh would uh make comprehensive revisions to chapter seventeen point four four of the city's code. And uh this will be a repeal and reenactment of the code, so it would be an entire replacement. Uh where the ordinance you had in front of you was making revisions, this would be different, just repealing and replacing. Um this ordinance would uh make revisions that will protect the city's unique heritage, uh character and um and protect our our heritage and cultural um aspects of our city. Uh I've made uh well, before I went into revision, I just want uh re-summarize the purpose of this ordinance, uh so this ordinance would accomplish three primary objectives, the first being they would require additional scope of work for development to be subject to a uh condition, uh sorry, a certificate of appropriateness to CLA, whether it's administrative or uh issue for a public hearing process. So that scope, the increased scope of work, that would be subject to a CLA would be uh additions to the existing structures, exterior alterations to existing structures, and new commercial construction, those those types of work are currently not, do not require CLA. Uh it also address what we've been calling the six month demolition loophole, so it would require reapplications for proposed demolitions to be subject to the criteria that's in the code at the time of reapplication. And the third, and this is really just a housekeeping item, uh be clarified that uh site visits are authorized by staff uh for a application for CLA. Uh since uh first reading, I just made one minor, I'm sorry, two minor revisions. Those revisions are clarifying that a digital copy uh of a of an application submitted uh is okay, in in addition to one hard copy, um I'm moving the city towards the digital age in terms of the application submitted requirements. And then also uh clarifying that written consent is required, and we can address this with the application form uh before for a site visit for staff uh for a pending CLA application. Those are the only two revisions since first reading. Uh planning zoning commission did review this since your last uh review of this, uh after your first reading, the planning zoning commission public public hearing. Planning zoning commission did make recommendation uh without amendments to that the city council adopt this ordinance. I can take any questions.
Any questions for Chayton regarding the ordinance? I would also like to uh invite the sort preservation commission chair uh to go up and make any comments that she uh would like to uh share with city council.
I would say one that. I wasn't planning to speak, but we've worked on this for a couple of years. Um some of the things such as the demolition ordinance that was in effect didn't make sense, and I've talked to a lot of people, and they agree, it doesn't make any sense. So we were hoping to change this so that it at least does make some sense. And as far as getting our curfew, I hope that this isn't the case of, you know, be careful what is asked for, because it will need more workforce, but we're concerned to preserve what Ledville is, and uh that's basically it. We we've worked hard on this, thank goodness for Chayton, he's helped us a lot and and great for us. Oh, too, so uh, yeah. If you have any questions, we certainly at some point feel free to ask.
We may call you back up, we soon. Okay, no, any any questions to staff at this point, yes, Casey?
Yeah. They do not consent with written consent for a site visit, although they're not a mandatory objection.
Let's see here, the um, I think the the best answer to that is could require applicant to um require or to to provide better documentation to demonstrate that they're meeting the code requirements.
Interesting. No questions? Okay, just time I want to open the stuff uh for the public for public comment on second reading. Uh if you'd like to speak, uh please introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes. For for something. Just grab that. Um well. Previously today, I covered the Cavalier matter for governmental propriety for a peaking government. And uh local county government Cavalier matter for um uh following related uses on the code. Um. Uh. What I'm concerned about is to eliminate pattern and practice of discriminatory enforcement. Um. We seem to have a real problem in that. And somewhat of a popularity contest on how uh enforcement is done on um uh issues such as this, and that will go over into the N H L thing. Um I have a a little thing about, oh, three letters to the uh editor that I would like to present, it would probably take about three minutes to present that, represent that. I'm sorry, what was the question? I have an illustration. On how um perhaps uh we're just going to carry on with this Cavalier manner in um enforcement of the NH National Historic. Could you consider in the next couple of minutes on plot that? Alright, so um. I wrote to the editor, when I was twice when I was running for office, and one time when I kind of ran on a writing thing. The first letter to the editor uh was edited by, not the Herald Democrat, it was the alternate newspaper that was here. Um I had one sentence that spoke against tourism, but two that supported it. Uh the two I supported it were edited out, and it made like, made me sound unrealistic that I was against tourism. Um. The second letter was to the Herald Democrat. And um I advocated uh um anyway, there was a compliment in there to the other newspaper. Um and that was edited out. The third letter to the Herald Democrat, um I spoke with Marcin and Martini about it, and I I talked about that first letter to her. And she said, well, I would never change anything in a letter. And then I brought up the fact that the uh compliment to the other newspaper was in there, and she said, well, I'm never going to allow a compliment to a competitor. So um. Uh and then that third letter was modified, she talked to me as a child, I would never sever a modify, and he said, and I think I was talking about the comprehensive plan having a negative impact, I said, would have a negative impact the way it was. And that got changed to uh, it might um have a negative impact, so I'm concerned that this uh discriminatory enforcement is going to carry through with possibly the personalities involved, there you go, that's it, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak uh during the public comments section? Okay, so you know, I would entertain a motion, entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Luna then moves to close the public comments portion of the of this public hearing.
I'm second.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Repose, any exceptions? Thank you, at this time, we are in deliberation. Comments, questions for your staff or the smartener? I would say this, the smartener knows that that I have. If you will chite it then, for a few years, because I I really felt almost a desperate need uh to get some of these rules in place to prevent the kinds of things that have happened in some of the cities in Colorado, where where they 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 were too late. Uh they weren't, they weren't, you know, working proactively to put in place the things that could save our community from the the kind of development that we don't want to see. And if if twenty years from now, we want Ledville to look approximately the way it does, I know that it'll be on my account, I get it, that's okay with me. It's fine with me, that's the way I I want to live, me personally. And uh and the more we can preserve uh the look and feel of our historic Ledville, the happier I'm going to be. So I want to thank the historic preservation commission for taking on some pretty bold steps, actually. Um that that not everybody's going to love. But I'm okay. Any other questions or more thoughts on this? Thank you very much.
I guess I'll say, um I personally am a big fan of whatever makes the most sense. Uh but it seems fine to me, I don't think that um this necessarily steps over that in any aggressive way. Um I don't mind preserving the history as long as it can be done in a way that can positively impact our community. And I I don't see how this could negatively impact our community, um and it keeps the character, uh which is something that certainly people like. Certainly a thing people like, so.
We do, when we do these things, we do a tenuous, tenuous property rights, I mean, that's the very nature of zoning uh anyway. And for a historic preservation commission, make no mistake, we are in, to some degree, telling people what they may or may not do with the property. Uh but we feel like the community's best interest to take that stand, so. Any other thoughts? In that case, I would uh. Entertain, please.
Uh Thomas moves that city council adopt ordinance number three, series of twenty three, in ordinance repealing reenacting chapter seventeen point four four of the Ledville Municipal Code concerning the regulations governing the city's national historic landmark over later state.
What about ten second?
I I wanted to to turn out on second reading, the attached one.
Okay, I'm good, I didn't see that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Still a second.
Uh great, uh any other discussion at this time? Will call please.
Councilmember Luna Land?
Yes.
Mayor Lavi?
Yes.
Mayor Prochey Green?
Yes.
Um councilmember Lutzen? Uh councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And councilmember Grant and Phil Raxton.
Thank you all very much, thank you, the historic preservation commission provides for, thank you to Chayton. So how we could have gotten here without you, I could say that all night.
That's my job, thanks, thanks for. Thanks for hiring a planning director. This is what gets done when you uh.
Thank you.
When you know, when you provide the right staff, you know, you think if you got down to it, I want to add one uh um note for the council, that's right now, we have a demolition moratorium in effect. Uh so what, we'll come back to you with an ordinance now that this is passed, once this is effective, to have that in ordinance, uh that ordinance that removes that moratorium.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. In the month of twenty, through October, is that correct?
Uh November, every, November, no.
Okay, this time, council report.
Uh I have a few updates actually, that was some good news, uh I'll have to get more details for our next reading, but uh I've heard that uh currently um some organization, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name, CMU, I think, is offering uh up to around forty thousand dollars to mobile home parks uh for rent to mobile homeowners um to weatherize and modernize their.
Forty thousand dollars?
Yeah, so that's an intensive amount of money, and that is exactly what we would need if we wanted to modernize and weatherize some of these uh mobile home parks, so I think uh I would love to see, you know, city council play some role in that, I really don't know what that looks like, maybe it has to be door knocking because the deadline is six weeks, it was actually at the end of last month.
The big C four is is today, they are taking the lead.
But uh whatever support that we can provide, I would love to see that uh be provided, and maybe that could look like manpower, maybe that could look like some outreach, um. I I'm not sure, I'm really not sure, but I would love to be supportive one way or another, um maybe it's just this.
It could be door to door.
Yeah, um but six weeks is a quick turnaround, and uh same with you, obviously, we missed the first deadline a bit being last month, but uh having this is an emphasis and putting a lot of pressure and letting everyone know. Um you know, hopefully, making more of a concern effort in places like the um called La Vila Nueva Union, which is a trailer park for about a tiny dollar, that's owned by uh the same residents. Um that can be a good place to start, um I mean, it's a pretty good deal, it's something that a community needs, and the amount of people that lose power, lose water, lose heat during the winter in mobile homes is surprising, and I'm sure you'd be surprised, I mean, how many people came to full circle to get services for that, and came to these people, so it's important, it's very important for our community, and it also modernizes um with green energy, solar panels, et cetera, et cetera, so.
There's a huge out there, we closed the public hearing, if we didn't already.
I haven't.
No, we did, oh, clearly.
No, we did. Oh, closing the public hearing. Some public hearing itself. Uh at seven, seven forty seven, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Someone's gotta keep. I think I'm glad you brought that up because Emily mentioned that to me and it went over my head. She also said that they they started under the care program, ancillary part of the care program. Putting people on a solar program that is automatic. You don't have to do anything. Uh you have, you have, I think you have to ask that you sign up on it, but anyway. And she said the average savings per year, they just got this information, is a thousand dollars a home, average savings on their utility. That I went, that's eighty dollars a month. That's fantastic. So uh you know, that that was pretty interesting to.
Yeah, no, it's it's huge. It's certainly a part of preserving our community the way that it is um. And letting people continue to live in the homes that they so desire to. So anything that we can do to preserve our community in that sense and especially given that this is not our money. It is cheapest for us to uh. Say, you know what? Yeah, it's put in the money, let's put in the effort to outreach and. I'm interested to see, I'm hoping to bring this up at the next coalition meeting, housing coalition meeting, because it seems appropriate. Um and maybe we can fully planify what this could look like and what potential supports could look like. So hopefully to come back with an additional report on this uh with more information, more accurate information as well as. Uh what could be potential follow-up steps?
Thank you. I know we're with the CMU on uh bringing and and the Colorado School of Mines are bringing solar and battery backup to the CMU. Also, they they're they're working with the Colorado School of Mines to get that designed to pursue grant funding. Uh so there and there's some other things going on with uh with CMU and that there's a kind of. I've been talking with some of the members about a consideration for like a deed restriction. Um that would be recorded for a period for the property to maintain some level of affordability and this would be separate from their internal regulating documents. Um so there's a lot going on with that particular property in terms of uh uh maintaining affordability and uh I guess resiliency.
Interesting. Thank you. Any other city council reports?
It was good parade.
I was just gonna say. It was a good parade and it was really, really meaningful to me. Uh to see our our state representative, our US representative, three city council members, the three of you. Uh and and county commissioner all in the parade. Uh that is not very often. I really was proud of that. It's pretty neat. And really, I didn't, I said, I I've seen Brittany earlier and I didn't know you were gonna be there. So that was a nice surprise as the parade was coming down the street. Uh terrific people, really terrific people.
She will hopefully be here, but there's a bit of a time conflict with that.
But I can only imagine her. The fact that she showed up here at all is just really.
Well, it's good. It's pretty all fun and games. Yeah, it's fun up there.
Oh.
More fun, right? It goes on.
Uh I also wanna thank the Lions Club for uh all they do. It's easy to take it for granted, but they put all these fireworks every year. It's a big, it's a lot of effort that they go through. And they have to raise money. Uh last I heard it was about eight thousand dollars per month. That could be an old number. I don't even know what it costs now. In fact, they came to talk to us year year before last about the igniter's, because they're they're going to all, you know, ignition systems rather than people. What we charge them to enlighten. Uh yeah. But the Lions Club, I mean, I I just, it's amazing what they do and I appreciate it. Uh we have music at Sines tomorrow night. Uh that band's here last year. They're gonna be here again this year. A little little beer production, but that should be a blast because they will be really fun, really good. Uh tomorrow night, six o'clock.
But none of us will be there because we're open in the morning.
Uh we're maybe the next week.
Yeah, I was getting hurt in that. I think so did.
Thank you. Yeah. At first I thought the same thing and then I saw that and I changed. Good. Um. Real quick, uh I went to Central City Opera opening night uh and my intent was to enjoy people's company. Uh because everything's changed at Central City Opera uh since the pandemic. They have a new artistic director. Uh they hired a CEO for the first time. Everything has changed and I don't know any of the people who used to be there, but we had a nice relationship with them. And they were putting on performances at the at uh K Opera House, their educational arm. And so I went there hoping to to reach out. The guy sitting next to me was was on their board of directors. And then he introduced me to Pam Panto, who is their new CEO. And so it went so much better than I'd hoped. And they were both excited about the possibility. Uh so I let Scott Carroll and Sarah Day know. And then I'm going again Sunday uh to perform at Kiskiwe Cave and then Sarah's going on the twelfth. So uh I was all, I mean, it really very feels very positive to me to reestablish. That connection with Central City Opera, which I think is a wonderful organization and it's who we wanna be, Kiskiwe Opera House, when we grow up. You know, but they've taken a hundred years to build their endowment and 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 the donors um that they that they have. So but they're 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 a great example of the direction we would like to go. Uh last thing is the uh the twenty fifth annual apartment kind of selling deed is gonna be at the Kiskiwe Opera House on the twentieth, twenty first and twenty second. Um we've been in rehearsals. We'll laugh our ass off. I hope it's that funny to the audience, but it's it's pretty fun. And and also very meaningful uh in terms of. You know, teenage angst and coming here, coming here, so it's really, I've never heard.
And one of the people choose?
No. I can't, I can't pull that at all. Okay.
I I have a question.
Okay.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's really disappointing to see that climax had reneged on their offer. Do you have any?
You know, I've been working on that for seven years and and it's. It was gut wrenching when I got that. But on the other hand, it wasn't that shock. I've I've been trying to deal with their corporate office for about four of these years, but they've been very difficult. And I've tried to buy my time because we had Mike Kendrick wanted this to happen, Noel Ware wanted this to happen. You know, even Aaron, who was the real estate agent, local guy, he wanted it to happen and none of them could get past this this corporate. You know, firewall of what they want versus what our community wants and needs.
It makes no sense, like, well, you know, housing is, we might need it, but they're out of here and just. With a with a sasita with you and Jackie. Do you think that would be a problem?
I've thought about taking another run at Mike Kendrick. He he's he's become somebody I, you know, I know fairly well and we skied together and. And so that's been really nice, nice worship. I went to the the uh um. Uh their banquet last year and he invited me to be his, and always said, Jimmy, think, these should make a difference. Well, it didn't. And so I'm I'm a little discouraged, but I'll tell you what, what turned the tide. This is, there there was a an issue in the legislature. And I'm not sure what forum it took, but basically it said you can't deed restrict it for third parties. Above and beyond their contribution to a project. Well, they were saying, you know, that maybe the land was worth six hundred fifty thousand dollars. That that was its steps down. And they're talking about it need a fifteen million dollar project minimum. And so I think they came to the conclusion that they won't be get out of this what they wanted. I tried to correct Jackie in that meeting with Eric and said, that's not, that's not cast in stone. It's a negotiation and but they. They didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, but like, but it's just the idea that the primary head of. The project wouldn't like advertise to their employees, like automatically a lot of their employees would probably qualify for for tier one system anyways. So.
You would think so, exactly, yeah.
It it's kind of a little bit backwards to me to not. Say, okay, maybe legally speaking they are, but I mean, hell, it's the same discussion we have in the school school district. I mean, you already have a heads up on any other local employee because if you're investing this much into the property. Then obviously you're gonna go ahead and invest into the effort of saying, hey, guys, hey, school teachers, hey, future school teachers, here's an opportunity. And I I mean, it inherently gives you advantage over any other local employee. So it's kind of baffling to see that that can be the excuse to kind of scapegoat your way out of it when.
Uh well, they're out of the way. Well, my, what I said was second, you know, I can't speak for them.
Sure.
But that's that's the, that was the first thing that came to mind, is that really scare them off?
And and even if it's not, that that then certainly is even less than an excuse because that's the most reasonable excuse.
Well, you you re-argued my my enthusiasm. Thank you. I I'm gonna go to Mike and just say, this is ridiculous. First of all, I'm not sure if you guys are gonna do anything with it and we could do something good for the entire community.
And they're not gonna get the benefit of any public funding.
No.
Katie West just said, we won't work with private individuals. We will only work for nonprofits. So they're they're not gonna help them. So I don't know how they think they can build affordable housing without.
I don't think they care about affordable housing. They wanna build.
They just want a house.
Whatever that happens to be. Yeah, no, it's uh I. I I'd like to bring it up because it was really very discouraging to me. Uh and I just handed it off to the county, you know, and one of one of the regional housing authority to go ahead and go forward with this. And uh all of a sudden this bombshell comes out.
The the second one is uh we're still eating on the lots and things too that we were supposedly getting.
Well, we weren't given, we were offered it at a really good price. Uh I would say I reminded Lori a number of times on that. It it hasn't been a prior for her because she's she's been buried and it's true. Um you know, she she's underwater of a lot of things. Um I would get that deal a long time ago. Because it's a good deal. You know, you're talking about five lots, which which might be in terms of pure size, four lots in the city of Leadville. That are something for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars each and they've been offered at about forty three thousand dollars each. Unquestionably. A good deal for us.
Should we wait until the dance thing goes?
Well, it's a P, it's a P U D, so.
Yeah.
That it's.
It's a matter of our plan.
It's not subject to the other zoning and rest of the code. But um but yeah, there's, I'm trying to remember, there's definitely, there's paperwork that says the developer is required. I can't remember what it says. Convey, but it it's.
Not gonna happen, although it does make me nervous.
Well, in order the price has been on, keep going on.
There's there's a possibility. You mean, he offered the price at the first, at the time, I thought that seems high, but then when I priced the number, I said, okay. I think we can do it. I think we should do it. I didn't love the price, but you know, I I could accept it. And that's where I was on that. But uh yeah, we 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 do need to make that happen. I agree, we've lost another year and that's like everything we do.
Yeah, well, some things to consider is face, there's there's a few things that have to happen before we even get there because phase two really right now is it's just one big piece of property. The P U D is not recorded and there's all those conditions that can met.
Discussion that you might give us lots in phase one that were less desirable.
Uh well, I think I think that would went aside because we got the lots, we would the lots I really thought we wanted. In phase two, if he offered us something in phase one and he gave it to us, you know, I might say, shoot, heck yeah. Uh we have, we haven't gone there yet because I haven't been involved in negotiations for now for a year and a half.
And I I think that this could be on the table. I mean, we could go back in the mid wherever that agreement is.
Before we do that, we have to be ready to negotiate. That's the problem.
The good thing is we 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 just got some things on. We just got that SIA amendment executed. We got the, we got the check, we got the funds. Um and so that is a box that's checked, so that gets us one step closer to those kinds of negotiations probably.
I feel like it would be appropriate to maybe not this meeting, but at some meeting, since it seems like we have the time um. Kind of redirect that as a priority of ours because given our circumstances, I don't see how it isn't a priority. Because I mean, you know, we've warranted the twelve unit project delay here and that's again, the the hits just keep on coming. Uh and and if I haven't warranted anything else in the last three years, it's it unfortunately you have to be so patient with all this. And I don't like being patient. It's not my strong suit. Um I'm I'm kind of forced to accept it, so.
Alright. Public meetings plan.
Our meeting is on the thirteenth at five thirty.
I was gonna say, can't make it to this meeting. I won't find out till Friday. I can make it to the Wednesday.
Just for my own clarification, those urban renewal meetings are always strictly on Zoom. There's no other person. I forget the reason why we changed it, but normally it is the first first day, right? But is it all in general or is there? Yeah, it's supposed to be business. Unless the mayor's.
Unless I'm sitting here.
And you could already do chat type tip.
Uh yeah, it's not.
Okay.
In in that, that's I'm assuming it, so. I have something down here. Tracy, you may know something about this. I have Justin Kirk here at City Hall on the eighteenth. From two to five, but I don't really, I mean, I have to reach out to him asking what or look it up, you know. I'm not sure what his purpose is and and so, so you know, Justin is uh kind of a regional representative for for Representative Patterson. In in kind of the mountain region and I don't even know why I was gonna be here, but I've got written down, so a monthly trip. Anything else on the uh? On the count.
I did see uh. Probably should be a council report, but um sanitation board is soliciting for a member.
Yeah, Dan Osborne's taking a job in Los Alamos. Um I know, he and Jimmy.
The other loss that will be both.
I I have to tell you, the sanitation board. I go to the board meetings. I shut up. Um I I really, I like the people there. It's, that's the problem. But I don't like the way they do business. Uh you know, and so I'll I'll leave it at that when I give more long detail. Uh go to Parkville Board meetings and it's like a whole different. Um whole different attitude about our community, so. Oh well. Anything else? Good city council. Thank you all.
Your honor.
It is uh.
Hey, comments?
Oh, yeah, yes, I'm sorry, chief. What you got?
Hi. This is the public comment session. It is at half time, Leadville resident, you know, I is for three. Uh while I'm going, so I have, we're not gonna be considered as the chief of police, but just as a part of the city that is in the lead. Um and I would like to start with bottom line upfront. I would like to make a suggestion, a life suggestion, Leadville City Council, that you. Reinitiate starting your city council sessions with the pledge of allegiance. Um. The pledge of allegiance was. A pledge created many years ago as a part of citizenship and patriotism and civic duty. Uh it is a representative of our flag and our country. And it is words that we say not in jest or in slight manner, but of of again, it is a pledge to the to the national country that we hold. Um I consider it a privilege to be born in this country and having seen and visited many parts of the world where. People will die trying to get there, particularly in the western hemisphere. That they make a trek across a long distance because they like the freedoms and the privileges and the fight that we have in this country. I know that many of Americans take that for granted because when you're born in this way, you just think that everything is like that. But having been across many countries in the world, they don't have these rights and privileges. And even having the uh unique experience of starting across the North Korean war. And looking at a North Korean soldier and wondering what on earth do they have? To consider and look forward to when they're brainwashed from from birth and they have no idea what it is to like and rest live across the world, let alone in the greatest country on this planet. Um the words are not hollow to me and I know they're hollow to a lot of people in this committee and this state. Um it is a standard practice for every session of the House of Representatives and for Congress to begin their session with the pledge of allegiance. It is also the same thing for the state legislature of Colorado and numerous states across Colorado do begin their sessions. With the pledge of allegiance. Um yeah, I think it really promotes and portrays patriotism, citizenship and civics. Uh I'll be the first. Patriotism, citizenship and civics. I'll be the first to say that our country is not perfect in any way whatsoever. But the ideals of the constitution, the declaration of independence and the bill of rights are something that we should always try to. Work toward and achieve. And that pledge is part of that in the fact that we are looking at those ideals and trying to work toward them. Um and as a government, the primary government body, the city of Leadville, you have a responsibility and a position to help promote that. I knew it was, I know it's been a practice for over years to do that. I don't know what the reasons were to cease doing that, but as an observer of your meetings for the last six months. That was one of the first things that struck me. Having uh witnessed and participated in city council meetings in other cities in the state. The state legislature. And also in Congress in Washington DC. Um. I just would make that suggestion as a part time citizen. It is not a criticism. It is merely a suggestion. For this body to consider.
Thank you. You're right. So thank you very much. I'd like to answer that if it's okay. Uh first of all, I'll preface it by saying I grew up in military training. And I was in the military and I'm a Vietnam guy. Um so I have no problem with pride in my country. Um or I really have no problem with pledge of allegiance. Um so now having been said, we came out of COVID. And we, as a city council, made a decision. As a body. And we had consensus, all seven city council members at that time, that we felt the pledge of allegiance was really unnecessary. And I will tell you why I feel that way and don't get me wrong. If city council says we want to do the pledge of allegiance. I'll live with that because I'm a little whatever, with whatever the the uh the consensus of this body is. That having been said, I think it gets overdone. And I guess that's why I wasn't really keen on starting it up again because we do the pledge of allegiance for. A dozen things. We do it all the time and it becomes meaningless. And I don't want it to be meaningless. I'd like for it to be meaningful. And when it's done constantly and by every organization in town, um it loses its meaning. And um that's, that's something that's important to me. So that's just to my, my fault on that particular topic. Um. Just my opinion. Any other thoughts from city council?
Retain particular comments. I want to uh add a at least. Uh. Not correction, but my own personal opinion of immigration and the cost of it. Uh though there are certainly freedoms that cannot be experienced in our country and I agree that our country is great and they live there for a reason. Um a lot of immigrants, I think it would be unfair to paint them as dying because they enjoy our freedoms, but rather because they are escaping. Their current conditions of literally living in impoverishment to the point where their kids are malnourished and dying anyways. And their only realistic escape is to leave to a country that quite frankly, they dwell in their malnourishment through the guns that. Have been manufactured here, though it's not by our government. It is certainly by our companies and our companies going abroad and. Uh kind of stealing some resources from their land. So I think it's a bit disingenuous to say that. People agree here just for the freedom and I think it is appropriate to say a large portion of that is due poverty and to escape violence. Uh from what's made here in the United States. Is a sign of two immigrants, my name.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts?
I'm the common council member. I wasn't here when the decision was made. I I certainly support starting a public meeting with the pledge of allegiance. But Mr. Prestash leaves us in the pledge, which I think it's odd for me uh to attend a public meeting that doesn't start with a pledge. And I think it brings everyone to one. Some common ground reminds us all that we're being more the same values.
Thank you. Anybody else before we move on? Okay, thank you. Uh this time, Mr. Prestash, you have three minutes. It's ten and a half. But to do there. Uh you know, I'm. Uh to support that, one thing with. Councilman Lou LaLea said that there was a corporations, remember reading in Mother Earth magazine? They did, I think it was, they did expose on how um. Uh. Dehydrated milk was prompted as the progressive way to raise children. And a lot of baby deaths in our third world country attributed to that usage because they couldn't get the clean water or. You know, do what needed to be done. So a lot of dehydration and uh and our corporations made, you guys have been making money on the honest, which are. Um. Uh I I want to thank the members Grant and Green for um. Their free speech encouragement by allowing and sponsoring this last three minutes. Um. I guess we're past one minute now. Um. I I I would like to turn reverse. I went to P and Z, last P and Z meeting, there was no P and Z members in actual attendance. Uh mayor was there, Chayton was there, I was there, Mr. Chayton. And um. Oh, the P and Z members were virtual. This is almost like becoming a bad science fiction story for. Uh we'd be represented by people that don't even come to meetings. I would like to see, I'm sorry, people all here all the time. Or maybe some kind of sanctions would be appropriate for members not appearing at these meetings. Um shifting to carrots, we talked about the earlier, the big uh one hundred k carrot that got that the rail yard got. And then we're giving them more carrots. Um I think it's time to stop the carrot roach and start using the stick on them. Um three, shifting to uh eating pro, um would like uh. Some examination of the role that um. Build a generation play in um allowing. And uh and and impacting in a negative manner. Um the sidewalk uh thing that they promoted at some about six years ago, or whenever that was a couple of years ago. Um so I'll 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 do more research on that. Basically, I have a problem with the. The uh Cali ham. Uh had the sidewalks in my neighborhood and when I said, as a member, that went to all those bees, I wanted them removed from my house. She said she couldn't do that because Sarah much put them there. This was supposed to be a a community thing, not a Sarah much thing. And Sarah Dallas went to that meeting also. That's my ten minutes, three minutes. Thank you, Tony. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. Good meeting. It is eight eighteen, the city council meeting adjourned.